Okay.
Commissioner Berman.
Here.
Commissioner Domara. Commissioner Domara.
Oh, thumbs up.
There it is, alright. Present.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Liel.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
All right, and Commissioner Wright, can you lead us in the salute to the flag?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. And before we get into our administrative business, I'll open up the floor for public comment on the administrative business, if there is any.
Chair Berman, are there any other introductory remarks you want to make about this evening's meeting in meeting format before we proceed?
Oh my goodness. Sorry, yes. Before we get into that, I will read our notes that we typically read at the beginning of the Zoom meetings. This meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section 54953, as amended by AB 361, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The governor of California proclaimed a state of emergency related to COVID-19 on March 4, 2020. This teleconference meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct essential business and is permitted under Government Code Section 54953 in order to protect public health and safety of attendees. Consistent with Government Code Section 54953, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference only, and there will be no physical location open to the public. Planning commissioners and staff will teleconference into the meeting by audio and/or video. The public can observe the meeting remotely via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation or via Cable Channel 26 for livestream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed live and will enable the public to speak during public comment periods. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, smartphone, or tablet, or also enter *9 to raise your hand if dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in your Zoom profile so city staff may properly identify you when it is your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. All right, thank you. Sorry, I've read that so many times, it's almost like the memory of it fades. Now I will open public comment on the administrative business.
Chair Berman, no hands are raised.
All right, thank you. I will close public comment. And on to administrative business, approval of the order of agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Liel.
I'll make a motion to approve the order of tonight's agenda.
Thanks, Commissioner Liel. Do we have a second? Vice Chair Hauser.
Full second, and I'm also just noting that I am present.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser. So we have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domara.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passed a six in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. On to approval of minutes, the September 6, 2022 meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes, or are there any comments? Commissioner Liel.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 6.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Domara.
I'll second the motion to approve the minutes.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domara.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And on to the designation of liaison to the City Council meeting. It looks like we do need a liaison for the September 26 City Council meeting, and that will be on the outdoor commercial permit ordinance and safe parking program, CDP appeal on Francisco Boulevard. So two items, and if I understand correctly, we can have two separate commissioners if desired.
That's correct, with the note that Commissioner Liel has a conflict of interest with respect to the Safe Parking Program CDP appeal, and so he would not be able to be the commission's liaison for that item.
All right, thank you. And I guess, Mr. Murdock, I know we have heard background on the Safe Parking Program appeal in the past, I believe, but we haven't heard background on the appeal for the outdoor commercial permit ordinance. Are you able to share a little bit of background on that appeal?
Absolutely, Chair Berman. And to be clear, I recognize the phrasing may be confusing, but the outdoor commercial permit ordinance has not been appealed. It's simply the introduction of that ordinance to the City Council. And so the liaison would be representing what the planning commission's action was at the last planning commission meeting, where the commission considered, you know, the various scenarios under which an outdoor commercial permit could be issued, private property in a parking area, parking lane in the public right-of-way, public sidewalk, and other private property areas. The commission's discussion, if you recall, focused on a number of safety issues, including tripping hazards, sufficient lighting, and then also noise levels in addition to some other discussion topics. And so the City Council will be considering the introduction of that ordinance and whether or not to make any changes, refer back to the planning commission, or introduce as recommended by the commission.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Are there any commissioners that are able to volunteer for either or or both? Mr. Murdock, in case it helps anyone looking at their schedules and work schedules, when does that City Council meeting begin?
So the regular meeting portion of the agenda is expected to begin around 7:00 PM. And so that's what I would expect sometime after that, those items to be called for consideration. And Chair Berman, if no liaison is identified at this point, perhaps the commission might consider returning to this item later in tonight's meeting to see if a liaison could be identified at that time.
Sure, we could. We could return to this item perhaps right before communications. All right. Okay. So we will return to that later this evening, so on to oral communications. So this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes.
Chair, there are no hands raised.
All right, then I will close the oral communications portion of the meeting. And on to consent items, we have none. And now new public hearings. We have one item. And this is file number 2022-001, Site Development Permit PSD-856-22 to construct a 323 square foot, two-story addition to the rear of an existing 3,111 square foot, single-family residence at 218 Juanita Avenue. Assessor parcel number 018-094-060. Recommended SEQA action is Class 1 categorical exemption, SEQA guideline section 15301. Recommended action is approved with conditions. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. Planning Director Christian Murdock, Contract Planner Jacob Garcia is going to make the staff presentation today.
Great. Thank you, Chair, and good evening, commissioners. My name is Jacob Garcia, and I'm a contract planner for the City of Pacifica. The project before you this evening is a request for a site development permit to construct a 323 square foot, two-story addition to the rear of an existing family residence at 218 Juanita in the Viamar neighborhood. This project requires planning commission review because the proposed addition would result in a floor area increase, which triggers a site development permit in single-family residential zones pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.3201D on a standard 5,000 square foot lot such as the lot before you, 218 Juanita. Projects that exceed 2,800 square feet in floor area require planning commission review and approval of a site development permit. The project before you tonight proposes a floor area of 3,434 square feet. Staff has reviewed the project, the proposed project of 323 square foot, two-story addition to the existing 3,111 square foot, single-family residence with a 470 square foot attached garage, and found that it complies with all zoning standards. In addition, the project would, in staff's assessment, result in a well-integrated addition that is consistent with the design guidelines. Staff's detailed analysis of the project is contained in the staff report, and staff recommends approval of the project as conditioned. No public comments have been received by the city to date, and the project's team is present at today's meeting and may also have a presentation. Both staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you, and I yield back to the chair.
And Mr. Garcia, are there any visuals to accompany the staff presentation before we move on to the next segment of the meeting?
Ah, yes, I have visuals available. I can show them now or as needed, but we have floor plans, elevations, and existing photos of the site, and I'm happy to share my screen.
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
Great, so this is a 5,000 square foot lot located in the Viamar neighborhood. It's a low-density residential, according to the general plan, land use designation, and it's owned R1, single-family. And you can see it located there. It is jumping a little bit faster than I'm anticipating. But here we go. Here's your site plan. That includes landscape plan. There's, the areas of green are the increase in landscape area to comply with the municipal code requirements. This also includes the floor plan for the proposed project. You'll see that in this, the rear of the house, where there is a current balcony. The balcony will be demolished and a building addition will be added on the first and second story. This is the proposed second floor plan, where the second story of the addition will be with the parapet window. I'm sorry, yes. And then the staircase here is a spiral staircase to be added in order to access the second story addition. You'll see that there's no changes between the, at the front of the residence on the left side. These are the proposed changes. You'll see the balcony area again being replaced with a two-story addition with the baby window. And this is the right side elevation, showing the other side. You'll see that the existing residence, it is jumping a little bit fast, sorry there. So you'll see that on the main residence, on this elevation, there is a window that is to be replaced and a sliding glass door on the first story to access the main residence being added there. And then the rear elevation showing the area of addition. Here we have the neighborhood context showing the existing residents with the neighboring sites. On the right-hand side is 216 Juanita. It's a single-story residence. And on the left-hand side is 240 Juanita, which is similar in size and scale as the residence, the project site. Here are the footprint comparisons. At the top is the 216 Juanita. This is just showing what the proposed addition will look like based on the, or compared with the existing floor plans. And the area of the addition is within, exceeds the footprint of the balcony by just a little there. This is the breakdown of what the code requirements are for the site development permit. I'm happy to walk through this if needed, but the threshold for a standard lot of 5,000 square feet is 2,800 square feet of floor area, which this project does exceed, and which is why it's before the planning commission tonight. Here's some existing photos of the site, the front and the rear of the residence. Photos of the rear of the residence. This is the balcony that will be, is proposed for demolition. Here are some more views of the rear of the residence. And here is the front of the residence with the neighboring property at 216 Juanita. And here we have the two sides of the houses. On the left, you'll see the side of the house on the 216 Juanita neighbor side, and then the side of the house on 240 Juanita neighbor side. And that's all I have for visuals. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. If no one on the planning commission is opposed, I'm thinking that we let the applicant speak. All right, not seeing any hands waving. Let's go ahead and hear from the applicant. And Mr. Murdock, if I remember correctly, they have 10 minutes, but they can reserve some time to respond to any comments after public comment period.
That's correct, Chair Berman. The applicant can reserve up to three minutes of the 10 minutes. So that would be seven minutes for the initial presentation and up to three minutes for rebuttal.
Okay. Well, then let's go ahead and hear from the applicant now.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Mark Lucarelli, architect. I think Jacob summarized pretty good. I don't really have anything to add other than, you know, we're really just replacing the massing, almost the same massings existing covered balcony there, here. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mark. Then I'll bring it back to the commission for any commission questions for either staff or for the applicant. Vice Chair Hauser.
Thanks, Chair. I only have one question. I'm like, you know, we haven't heard public comment, but I'm not opposed to this. This seems pretty straightforward. But I do have to ask, what is the impetus for the copper roof? Have to ask.
Just the climate. I mean, you know, the microclimate eats everything. But at least the copper is a good start.
Got it. So the, like, the aesthetic thought is that it would patina and then blend into the aesthetic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other commission questions? Commissioner Wright.
I'll have some questions following public comment, if that's right.
Yep, that's perfectly fine. Then if no commissioners are opposed, then I will go ahead and open public comment.
Chair, no hands are raised.
All right. So it appears there are no public comments, so I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission for deliberation or additional questions. Commissioner Wright.
I guess I would like to know from the applicant if he shared his plan with neighbors on both sides, just to have an understanding of his process a little better.
Actually, coincidentally, the one-story residence to the right, as you're facing the subject from the street, their mother is living. So it's kind of incestuous and you know, of course, it's okay with her. I don't think they, I'm not sure, but they may have reached out to the two-story neighbor, but I'm not sure about that.
And then as a follow-up question, I saw that you were adding a lawn. Is that to be watered, or is that going to be astroturf?
If it, currently, right now, their lawn is natural sod, and the idea is just to match it. But if it's certainly made a requirement to be artificial, then I think they would go along.
Those were my only two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wright. Are there any other questions? Or deliberation in items?
Chair Berman, I did want to note that during some of the commission questions of the applicant, one attendee hand did go up. I don't know if it was a late raise in relation to the public comment opportunity, but wanted to flag that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Yeah, let's go ahead. Oh, and I see the hand now again. So I will reopen public comment, and we get here from the commenter.
Thank you. I'll just need a minute to get us set up for the public comment, and then we'll call the speaker. All right, Christopher Sweedler, please go ahead.
I was, I'm, I'm the applicant, the person who owns the house. I'm here listening, and I was just trying to answer the question that somebody asked about the, about the lawn as it was being extended. We're in the process of trying to find a low-water solution for that anyway. And so I'd be happy to hear if there are recommendations about the right way to do that. Sorry, I didn't really mean to reopen the public comment. I was trying to help answer, but that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Swayler, did you want to join the meeting along with your architect in case any other questions come up? And then we can return you to an attendee when the commissioners are completed with their deliberations.
Sure, if that's helpful, I'd be happy to.
Would that be acceptable, Chair Berman?
Yes, that would be, that would be good. And now if there's any other attendees who have any public comments, you have an opportunity now if you'd like to raise your hand or dial *9 if you're calling in. Mr. Murdock, are there any other public comments?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, thank you. I will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission. And Mr. Swayler, no worries on reopening public comment, it happens. All right, Vice Chair Hauser.
I don't want to jump the gun if other people have things to say, but again, this seems pretty straightforward, and I'd be happy to make a motion if no one has anything else. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion. I move to approve, or sorry, I move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from SEQA, approved site development permit PSD-856-22 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Domara.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seeing any other hands for any other comments, so I don't think we jumped the gun. Thank you, Vice Chair Hauser and Commissioner Domara. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domara.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and that project is approved. Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. All right, so that's the end of our new public hearings. So coming back to one of our administrative business items, the designation of liaison to the City Council meeting of September 26. Looking for either one commissioner to serve for both of those items, or it could be two separate commissioners for each item. And Mr. Murdock, can you remind us, did we have a designation of liaison for the Safe Parking Program appeal previously?
We did, and I believe it was Commissioner Wright, if memory serves.
That's correct.
Commissioner Wright.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it if I'm over my cold at the moment. I I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it if I'm over my cold at the moment, I have my voice about 50% of the time. That's the only hesitancy on my part.
Okay, well, I guess, Mr. Murdock, if there is an instance where Commissioner Wright is unable to attend, what would be our protocol at that point?
Maybe best to appoint a backup now, Chair Berman, in the event that Commissioner Wright is unwell during the hearing day.
Okay. All right, so we have a primary liaison, Commissioner Wright, but in case he is unable to attend, do we have a backup?
I'm happy to fly solo, it might work out to all our advantage for me to be quieter.
All right, I guess, Mr. Murdock, can we proceed kind of at the consensus that we have currently?
Certainly, Chair Berman, we have a liaison appointed, you know, we'll send our well wishes to Commissioner Wright over the next few days and hopefully he'll feel well enough to participate as the commission's liaison.
Yes, Greg, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Then moving on to communications, so commission communications, are there any commission communications? Commissioner Wright.
Once I'm better, I'd love to go back to in-person.
Yes, no, no in-person while, while anyone's ill, I give everyone permission to phone in if you're ill. Commissioner Lille.
I'll just say it, FogFest is this weekend, so come on down in Palmetto, hang out, should be good weather.
Commissioner Domrat.
Please let me know if it's inappropriate to consider this proposal, but I would like the commissioners and the public to consider, is it possible to schedule a meeting between now and the holidays where we can get some feedback on lessons learned from the public as to how the planning commission is performing? You know, just give them an opportunity, maybe we do it at the end of one of our meetings that exists, maybe we have a special meeting, kind of, you know, I'm not sure if you could say informal, it would be formal, but I really like to hear from the public. You know, we've been working on a lot of things for them this year, a lot of big things. And I'd like to, to see if they have any lessons learned for us that we can make improvements, how we interact with everyone. We could start that off by having the commissioners kind of submit ideas of, of maybe how we would like to see things get improved or not improved or, or whatever. But, I mean, is that something we could do, Mr. Murdock?
So my recommendation would be to make this an agenda item for the next planning commission meeting and that will allow staff to identify what the options are or if there are any concerns about proceeding in that manner.
That'd be perfect, great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Domrat. And actually, to add on to that, just to remind everyone in the public that at the beginning of our meetings, when we have oral communications, that's a great opportunity for anyone in the public to provide comments to the planning commission, give opinions on items that are not on the agenda. So we could be a sounding board to the public and it could also be some direct feedback that we could receive from the public too. Are there any other commission communications? All right, staff communications.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening again, Commissioners, I have a few updates. So the city council on September 12th adopted a new heritage tree ordinance. It will take effect in 30 days from adoption. It changes the definition of the heritage tree and expands tree protections more broadly than the prior ordinance. And so as a result, you'll see staff's analysis of tree removal proposals change in future staff reports to reflect the provisions of the new ordinance. The city council at the same meeting also approved the hotelway, right-of-way vacation that the planning commission considered at a previous meeting for general plan consistency. Next week, the city is hosting two meetings that may be of interest to the planning commission. The first is a special city council meeting on Tuesday, September 27th at 6:00 PM to discuss the triennial building code update and more specifically, the reach codes that the city council can consider to exceed the requirements of the standard building code. For those that aren't familiar with the terminology, the triennial building code update is an update required by state law for all of the city's building codes to match the statewide code updates that the state Building Standards Commission, where it has worked on over the prior three years, so that resets the new baseline for the city's building codes. And the city is required to adopt that by December 31st of each triennial code update year, so December 31st of this year. And then reach code is a term that's used to describe local amendments to the building code that cities can put in place to exceed the requirements, particularly for energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reductions. Most commonly, it takes the form of required electrification of different components of buildings, residential, commercial, et cetera. And so the city council in the last triennial building code update adopted reach codes and so the city council wants to revisit those already adopted codes and consider if they should remain in place as well as to consider whether additional reach codes should be put in place in Pacifica. So this will be the first step in that process. And then the second community meeting next week is on Wednesday, September 28th, starting at 6:00 PM and it's to discuss the city's housing element update process. And anybody interested in participating in that meeting or learning more can go to plantpacifica.org for more information. That meeting will be held via Zoom, as will the building code update meeting that I mentioned. And the focus of the housing element meeting on Wednesday is to establish some community-wide and baseline information about what the housing element update is, why we're doing it, and the importance of how the community needs to come together to try to achieve our regional housing needs, planning objectives. And then lastly, the city council at its next meeting on September 26th will consider whether and when to return to in-person meetings and so Commissioner Wright's comment on that point is timely. For us, practically speaking, at the planning commission, we likely won't return prior to the October 17th meeting. We've already had to send notices to the newspaper for the October 3rd meeting, establishing the meeting location and so barring extraordinary circumstances, we're not likely to return prior to October 17th. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock, Commissioner Wright.
Can we ask Commissioner or Director Murdock to send out a link to that 27th and 28th meeting? Just to facilitate attendance, thank you.
Certainly, I'd be happy to send that to the commission, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so it looks like we came to the end of the meeting. Before we go into adjournment, I'm just gonna read this item. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above, above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court, not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision becomes final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation. In certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. So with that said, do we have a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Lille.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this, tonight's meeting.
Thank you, is there a second? Commissioner Godwin.
I second that motion.
Thank you for that motion and second, can we have a roll call vote?
It looks like we lost Director Murdock, so I'll go ahead and facilitate that. Chair Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Domrat.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Hauser.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
And Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
All right, and that passes.
Thanks, Bonnie, have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.